Welcome to the City of Manistee Planning Commission meeting Thursday, October 6, 2022. Time is 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Here.
Commissioner Samansky? Commissioner Mamberto?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here.
Chair Whitlow?
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda at that this time the planning commission can take action to approve October 6, 2022 agenda. There a motion?
I have a motion.
To approve?
I'll second.
Second by Pam, discussion?
Yes, can we add under new business, there's a gentleman here for 156 Washington that would like to canvass the planning commission?
Okay.
And can we end that under the parcel split request under new business?
Yes, okay. All right. Any further discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlow?
Yes, thank you. Conflicts of interest, is there any member of the commission that has conflict with tonight's agenda? None, okay. Approval of minutes, planning commission can approve the September 1, 2022 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Okay, motion by Marlene?
Second.
Second by Shelley, discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlow?
Yes, thank you. Correspondents? Has there been any correspondence?
Just the correspondence that you guys have received via email.
Okay, thank you. And there's no action on that?
No.
Okay. Manistee Industrial Corporation, Mr. Steve Brower?
Hello, my name is Steve Brower, I'm with the Industrial Development Corporation of Manistee County. I've been having someone talk about this for a few minutes, so I plan to do that. I don't know if many of you are familiar with the IDC, I'll call it the IDC, I don't know if you're familiar with that organization. We're kind of one of those that's under the radar, I think, a lot of times. And we do some nice things, but we don't, you know, we don't seem to publicize it that much, and maybe that's one of our faults. But anyway, the IDC was incorporated back in the late 50s, and their main goal or mission was to help promote industrial jobs and growth. And they did did some in the early stages, but I think what happened was, once we got into the 70s, the, you know, the economy changed, then industrial jobs changed and everything else. So the organization wasn't very active for several years. One of the big projects that we did do was back in the early 1990s with the prison. I think the IDC owned several acres out there on M-55. If I'm not mistaken, I think they had like 120 acres. I think we gave 40 acres to the state and sold another 40 for them. I believe that's how that worked out. So the IDC was instrumental in bringing the prison and the jobs to Manistee. Since then, we've kind of refined our mission. We are also, you know, we continue to want to grow jobs, but industrial jobs probably aren't going to be the type that we're going to see. So we're looking at any types of jobs that we could create or retain jobs too. That's just as important as, you know, going out and getting getting new jobs. So retention is very important as well. We've been involved in various projects. We've done, you know, we've donated money to the hospital. They've used it to do a, I think, a wing with the emergency room or something like that, if I'm not mistaken. We've done stuff with the college, the community college, built a new building downtown. We were able to help them with that. The IDC gave some money to the Vogue Theater about 10 years ago when they were working on the project to restore that, the old building on River Street. To do that as well. Been doing a lot of different things like that, which is, I think, has had an impact on our community. One of the things that we did in the last couple of years with COVID is we partnered with a couple organizations. One of them is Venture North, which is from Traverse City, it's a nonprofit, CDFI, Certified Development Financial Institution. They put money forward that they collected from Consumers Energy and some other sources. We were able to leverage those funds and we, I think altogether with that organization, there was about a million dollars given out in over 300 grants in the various counties in our region. But locally in Manistee, we did probably about $85,000 in grants to different businesses that were struggling during the pandemic. A lot of places were closed, they couldn't open. These were service industries that didn't have much in resources to fall back on. So it was, you know, a critical time for us to do that. So we were pretty proud of the activity and the work that we did with that. I think we did help retain a lot of people jobs and kept the doors open. Lastly, we've been trying to focus our attention a little bit on other things. There's been a couple businesses that have opened or expanded in Manistee. We've made loans to them, we made a grant to one of them as well. So we're trying to invest the money in those organizations that we see some good job growth for the future. Unfortunately, if you haven't noticed, the stock market hasn't been too cooperative lately. Our fund balance has been impacted by that, so we're probably going to hold off a little bit on making new grants and what have you. It's not a good time to be selling your stocks, if you know what I'm saying. So with that, we're quite proud of what we've done. We have, you know, a pretty good size fund balance that we're going to preserve and keep for the future. We have a board of about 12, 11 people that are on the board. They're mostly retired business people and a few that are working. We meet as needed. We meet probably once or twice a year. It's not a very busy board, but if there's something that comes up that we need to talk about, we'll do it. We have an institution that manages our funds for us, so we have professional services for that, so. I think it's a great organization, it has, you know, a mission that I think is needed for areas. I really did like the activity that we worked on during the COVID. These are people you you work, you see them every day here in town, and they were struggling. A lot of people struggled, and I think we made a difference. Quite pleased by that. That's the 30,000-foot view of the IDC, I'd be glad to, is there any questions if I could, or if you have any else you'd like to know about what we do?
Any questions? Go ahead, pledge.
Well, it sounds too good to be true, but where do you get your funding to help all these people out? If you don't mind my asking?
Well, back in 19, in the late 1950s, we sold stock.
Okay.
We received donations from different businesses and what have you. So there's money that was created that way, and I think they had some property that they somehow acquired. And to be honest, I don't remember how that came about. Tom Cabanick was instrumental in that for a long time, but.
Sounds like a little quiet society, if you ask me. Like you say, you got 11 people on a board to decide, you know, what you're going to do with X amount of dollars. So if I were to come into Manistee with a market or a plant, I could see you for money, your board?
Yep, we would look at it, and if it's something that we think is, makes sense, we would definitely look at helping you out with that.
How do you receive your referrals?
Thank you.
How do we get referrals? We get a lot from the Chamber. We have a close relationship with Mark Miller, and so we get we get an awful lot from there. And then I think Mark asked me to come and talk tonight about this, so that maybe the more people that know about this, the more referrals we'll get, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Anything else?
No, Roger got my question too.
Do you have, do you have anything in coming in the horizon that you guys are talking to anybody about? I mean, just asking?
Yeah, no, not right now. We just, we closed a nice loan this summer. So we did that, but as I said, right now, our portfolio is down in value a little bit. So I think we'll probably pull our horns in, you know, and try to ride it out a little bit, so.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Unless there's a good project, we'll do it if we could.
Do you look at all types of projects or types in particular?
The two jobs, or the two loans that we made were somewhat industrial or manufacturing. It's not to say we wouldn't look at a commercial or a service. Just have to look at. We try to, if we can, we'd like to stay true to our original mission of industrial. So if there's an opportunity that goes by, we try to do that.
Marlene?
Thank you, Mark.
All right.
Thank you.
Steve, thank you so much for informing everybody and about the IDC, we appreciate it a lot.
Yep, one of the best kept secrets.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Public comment on agenda-related items. If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment about tonight's agenda, please come to the mic. Name an address, please, and you have three minutes.
Three minutes?
If there's anyone.
Hmm.
All right.
All right.
Moving on to new business, parcel split request on 5151101-275-02. 99 Arthur Street. So is the applicant here?
Yes. Order director, my president of the city of Milwaukee.
Can I get your name, sir?
Tom Reed.
Pardon?
Tom Reed.
Okay, thank you.
What are you?
Could you explain, well, we know that you're selling?
We're selling a portion of our property, the campground portion. Marginally profitable anyway. When I was approached by another businessman, it was perfect for me, because I wasn't crazy about the campground anyway, so. Worked out perfect for me. I can't, I don't know what his mission is, but that's why we're splitting the property.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I mean, it meets all the setbacks and everything, correct?
Just going to chime in when you guys are ready. First of all, as you can see, I'm not Katie, so.
Oh, you're not? I don't know about that.
So I'm going to do my best impersonation, and a lot of this was put together with her, so if you guys have questions, I'll do my best to answer them. But this one's pretty straightforward. Sharon from Molly's company signed off on this, so the assessor feels that it's able to be split, which is the, the, blinking on the name of it, but it's the land.
Take it easy, Katie.
Color me blonde, I guess, so.
Oh, straightforward.
The Land Division Officer, I'm sorry, I couldn't think of the name, just took me a second. So they've signed off on it, and from our aspect of it, it does meet zoning, so it's a pretty straightforward request.
All right. Very good.
Only makes sense there, because it used to be the hotel spot years ago, and the more stuff we get going in there, the better we're going to be.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, good.
I'm going to assume that you've worked out anaisement, so that you have?
Yes, right, yeah, we've got anaisement for ours.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Shelley, you got anything?
I have nothing.
Come on.
I don't.
Marlene?
Go ahead, boss, I'm good.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Reed.
You betcha.
Parcel split, is there a, oh, anything else from you?
Yeah, you guys have the 156 Washington, we amended the agenda, oh, not on this, but.
We have to make a motion on this.
Oh, yeah, yes, you do, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself, yes, you do.
Katie?
Take it easy, Katie. All right.
So is, we thought of that. Just water. Is there a motion to approve or deny?
A motion to approve the request of the parcel split on River Street, okay.
Motion by Rogers, second by Bob, any further discussion?
No.
None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlow?
Yes, thank you, congratulations. Text and added under new business is 156 Washington Street.
All right, and just a reminder, this is a canvassing, so there is no motion or support or anything, or generally just if you like the idea or do not like the idea, so.
Okay.
Hello, thank you for listening to me tonight. John Myers from Dearborn, Michigan, who I bought this property with my partner. He's not here tonight, he's in Texas visiting his fourth grandchild. So we purchased this property last month, and we're going through it, looking at proposing four new apartments in this structure. Gutting the entire interior and creating four relatively equal-sized square footage-wise apartments. The, I guess the area is zoned residential already, up and down Washington there. And under the district regulation, Article 15 C3, it tells me that the minimum lot size would be 2,500 square feet and not more than three units. And we sort of satisfy all those parameters. The, I guess the first, the first, these are very quick sketches that I made up here for you. The first page is just showing the building facade here, the elevation, and four new porch overhangs to make it look basically homey. And we haven't quite figured out the parking situation. We would like possibly to have each, maybe two vehicles in front of each door as parking, but we had also talked about a nice green space up front with parking off to the north side of the parking lot, which would accommodate approximately eight vehicles. So that is still sort of in the works. But you know, the, this building was an old laundromat, and it's been sitting vacant for quite a few years, and I think the, I don't know, there's been quite some problems over there with, you know, people breaking in and stuff like that. But we intend to gut the entire interior of this building, rework all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, heating, cooling for each unit, have four separate services for each unit. Each apartment's basically one bedroom, there's one apartment that has two bedrooms. Living room, bath, kitchen, pretty simple. The project right across the street in a historic building, we had looked at their plans, and it looks like they're proposing 15 new apartments at 650 square feet per unit. So our apartments are marginally bigger, at least 25% bigger than those apartments, so.
And just a quick correction, this property is not in the C3, it is in the R2.
Is it?
Yes, so it's not commercially, it's not a commercially zoned property.
It's not a commercial?
No, it is actually in the R2.
Residential.
Yep.
This is the old laundromat that he's talking about, correct?
Yes, that is correct, yep.
Yeah, okay.
And just a quick question, there are apartments in it currently, is that correct? There are apartments in it currently, correct?
There are two pre-existing non-conforming apartments on the top of this structure that we planned, that'd be the first thing to remedy all the violations that we come across at those two apartments. I know one's an efficiency, one's a two-bedroom, and I think they were built quite a while ago, and it's, no one, no one has any record of any building permits or anything there, so. I've been in them, the larger one is very nice. The other one is basically an efficient, efficiency, I guess, no bedroom.
How many times, it seems like I thought this was the same owner for the last couple of years, because somebody was in there and did work, and then it just sat forever.
Yeah, if you recall, this property was owned by Hickory Properties when they came through and bought up a couple of the properties in town. The person that was really driving this, this, this project on it unfortunately passed away of COVID during, during the pandemic. And so a lot of the properties are, you know, in turn being sold off, and they're pulling out of their investments. So unfortunately, yes, we're seeing a new owner, and this property has changed hands probably about three times within the last five years.
Yeah, at least, I would have to think. But could I ask a question, Mark? Are you finished, sir, or is there more for you?
I want to sort of expand on what he said. Three, three individuals or three corporations or investment people bought these, this property, tried to make money, a little bit of, you know, marginally, tried to make a little bit of money. We're not here to do that, we're here to renovate the entire interior of this building, brand-new stuff, one- and two-bedroom apartments, and giving, you know, the city of Manistee four new residents to house.
Thank you very much for that. But my only question, sir?
Yeah.
Are you in the business of renovating buildings for?
I'm a residential contractor downstate.
So why did you buy the place, and now you're going to ask for a change? Why didn't you ask the concept before you bought the place? Because if we shoot you down, what are you going to do with the place?
There's several things we could do. If you want us to only have resident mixed, we could do commercial and residential in the building. And there's, it's, you know, it's totally up to you, but this is, again, this is all, this whole street was zoned residential, and we're, you know, proposing residential apartments here.
Right, right. I just, okay, go ahead.
This won't be low-income, this is strictly rental.
Right, long-term rental, right, and the rental, you know, the prices we're looking at are 900 to 1,100 dollars right in there, so.
Were you guys the ones that had the rollout dumpster in front of it the other day?
Yeah.
Okay, I saw, I saw that pile.
Yeah, we're just, we're throwing away up, interior stuff, furniture, and the guy left a bunch of stuff in there. We had to, I'm trying to, trying to figure out where the walls are, you know. So.
Well, it would be, just looking at it, the theory of it, it would be nice to have more housing. Manistee's kind of housing poor. And have this building fixed up, because, yeah, add to Washington Street along with
Yeah, that's our intention.
The Northern Hotel, if, when that, when that gets up and running, it'll be reconfigured, refaced, same with your building.
You got plenty of parking space there in front of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's going to, yes, because there, did you look at the parkings? Are we adequate parking there?
There's quite a bit of room for parking.
I know, but I mean, is there adequate parking there?
You have to have.
Yes.
It depends on what's approved, I mean, so.
My partner and I were looking at it, you know, we don't want to look, make it look like a motel with a series of cars in front of the building like that. We would see a northern parking lot accommodating, and they would have to walk through, you know, a common sidewalk, through a green area and so on. And, you know, we also tossed around maybe putting some small courtyards in front, but I think that belongs in the back. But there's an elevation problem with the back of that, the topography doesn't allow that, so.
Great, 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 all you got is the front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's easy access to downtown and everything.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, about five blocks.
Nice, nice location.
Getting rid of cement and adding green would be key, I mean, I like it, I hate cement.
Yeah, we, again, we don't want to make, we want to make it look very appealing from the, from the elevation, from the facade there, and with grass and bushes and maybe a small fence and all that, put the cars off to the side, you know, so.
So the, just a quick question, the upstairs apartments?
Yes, sir.
So they're not configured in your drawing?
They're, they're not, this is just the bottom elevation here, so.
So you could have five or six apartments?
Right.
With that?
And there's probably 12 parking spaces there, so.
Heather? Yeah, I know, it's a big slab of cement.
The big question that I had, and I'm unfamiliar with this, like, I know that they had requested to be on it, and luckily Nancy kept me straight here and said, hey, don't forget, she asked that, they could canvas it. I know you had spoke to Katie, what was the, the holdup on, was it that it's, the zoning in it, since it's R2, it doesn't allow you the space in it, and so you're seeking a rezoning? Or are you going to be coming in as a special use? Or both? So what was your main hook?
We met with Katie, she just, she's very informative. She was outlining, there is a building code that says 5,000 feet per apartment, and that's parcel area, or 15,000 feet total for parcel area. We only have 14,000 square feet of parcel area here, lot, our lot size, and we're proposing four new apartments, but so that wouldn't fly that way, as far as the residential apartments.
So my thought is, is probably have to take a rezoning without looking into it. I know this property has been, several times in my, my time here, people have looked at it to add it into like the C3 district. It's right on the edge of it. If you guys chose to rezone it, if you're open to that, and that's what it would take to get it to have the smaller units, it wouldn't be a spot zone, so if you guys are looking favorably on this, then it's something that you could potentially do. We'd have to look at the master plan to see where it's at, and then go from there.
So it would have to be rezoned because of this, the 1,000 feet?
Unless you put a commercial element into it that was a mixed use, because then that's the only way you can get a PUD in there.
So is it across the street, a different zoning area?
Across the street is zoned differently.
If we do do a change in zoning, it's just enlarging a zoning district?
Right, across the street, it is, it is C3. You go to where there are places in that block and its entirety is R2, I believe. So therefore, you would have to rezone it if you want to get to a smaller density of the.
Be expanding a zoned area.
Yeah, it'd be one area, and then you had to, but it has to be supported by like the future land use map, other things. So, you know, I think you guys are generally looking favorably on the project, but without having, you know, digging deeper into it, I think that maybe if you guys are looking favorably, Katie can sit down with the gentleman and hash it out, so.
Yeah, makes sense.
So.
Before we get any, look into it.
Yeah, I mean, what's, what's everybody's feeling, so.
Conceptually speaking, I think it's a good idea, boss. Thank you for four apartments, I can say that, yep.
Thank you.
Marlene?
I think it's a great use of the space.
Yeah.
What is the name of the, I don't know anything about you, what's the name of the county you're representing?
Victorian City Properties. Is our company, LLC, yes, it's LLC, yeah.
Good question there, Marlene?
We need more housing, I like that these are fair markets. I think it's a great location, I used to live right around the corner, I like it.
Pam?
Said the magic words for me, which are long-term.
Yeah, it's worth her looking to get into.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to see the north side getting, sprucing up more of the areas, looking more along that lines, and with them being right adjacent to correct zoning, you know, we're not doing a big stretch of having them possibly change the zoning, because it's, it's still adjacent.
All right.
Which is not like we're jumping areas.
No, that's, that's true.
I like the idea, could be a nice addition to the north side.
Great.
And, you know, start that reefer of Washington North.
Yeah.
I do have one other question, so if you were to develop the two top apartments, what does that do to the zoning? Would it still be encompassed in the?
It would still be fine, so like.
Yeah, we're not really developing the top, we're going to fix everything. I mean, it was like the Wild West, you know? People are just putting stuff together with.
I live in a very old house, I guess.
So we're going to go in there with fine tooth and comb and clean it all up, and still hopefully have an efficiency and then a two-bedroom up there, and then possibly four below.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
If you need money, the fellow that just left. Pass him down, they got it.
Can I ask you one thing before you hot foot out of here? Is this your first project in our city?
I own three duplexes and a house on First Street that I, uh, took vacation at when I'm up, stayed here. So, uh, no, no, I've done a lot of these projects.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving along, uh, old business zoning amendment request, places of large assembly.
All right, so.
Here we go.
So I, um, you guys received Katie's memo, um, and if we, we look through it, um, what we see here is within the, uh, the district, the C3 district. She, she first of all realizes that, um, public assembly was already allowable within the district for small, which is up to a hundred people. So once she really dug into it, she figured out, well, this was, what this request was coming in was a lot, larger than a hundred people into these districts. Regardless, she says, if you guys are in support of this, it would be along the lines of adding parking requirements, um, to these, uh, public assembly areas. So, um, right now it'd be two places or, or it's, maybe it's four, hold on, I'm going to have the reader. I'm going to go through her, her recommendations here, guys, and then we'll, we'll go from there because she spent a lot of time on this and I kind of had to pick it up, so give me one second. So, uh, just to let you know that the DDA, um, that generally supported it, the language of the city attorney, it was determined that we cannot exclude tax-exempt organizations through zoning ordinance. The city, um, attorney provided that Religious Land Use and institutionalized Persons Act 2000. This is a federal statute prevents the city from creating a land use regulation in a manner that imposes a substantial burden on the religious exercises of a person or religious assembly of an institution unless it furthers a compelling government interest. The federal statute also prohibits the government from creating land use regulations that treat religious assemblies unless in equal terms of the non-religious assemblies. Due to this, excluding tax-exempt entities is not something that, um, should be pursued with this amendment. And the DDA had, you know, inquired about that because they get their funding through, obviously, taxes into their own district, so that was our own question on that. Furthermore, it was discovered that the use of places of public assembly small is already allowable as a permitted use in the C3 district. Staff recommends the following language, language as it relates to this amendment, and it's actually, um, Article 5, General Provisions. Amend, uh, 514, parking, biking, bike parking and sidewalks and remove subsection H for all permitted uses and special uses in the C3 district. The parking provisions and the section shall not apply except to hotels, motels and residential use. Condominiums required, parking should be provided within two hundred feet of the building. One space shall be provided per dwelling unit. And then it's to add, and this is just really a clarification on this, um, because it kind of doesn't flow correctly. And it was for all permitted uses and special uses in the C3 district, the parking provisions of this section shall not apply except to places of public assembly. So adding that in, um, hotels, motels and residential use condominiums. Recar, required parking shall be provided within two hundred feet of the building and one space shall be provided per dwelling unit for residential condominiums. So if you compare the top and the bottom, you're adding and except for the public, a place of the public assembly essentially in the C3 district. Making that if you have one, that you have to provide parking. And then you're clarifying in the bottom portion that the one space shall be provided per dwelling unit is for residential condominiums and not for the others. So that's just kind of a little bit of clarification as well, if this is the, the language that you guys choose to move forward with tonight. She also recommended that in Article 15, the C3 Business District amend section 1502 uses permitted by land use permit and remove special uses that require key street frontage, places of public assembly large. So if you choose to allow public assembly large in there, you'll have to remove the key street frontage on there and add special uses, um, of places of public assembly. So removing the key street frontage from that is, is essentially what this does. And then amend Article 18, Standards and Requirements for Special Uses. You're going to amend section 18, 68, Places of Public Assembly, subsection B, Regulations and Conditions. Remove one, large, uh, places of public assembly and say, um, a, a large place of public assembly shall front on the excess primarily from a key street segment as defined herein unless it is located on a parcel of land with a minimum area of five acres. And you're going to, so you're removing that and then you would add in, um, large places of public assembly, a large place of public shall front on and be accessible from, primarily from a key street segment, except for in the C3 district as defined herein unless it is located on a parcel of land area with a minimum area of five acres. So tonight you guys, as a commission, can move to modify the proposed language and approve, approve as presented or deny the request. If the request is denied, staff asks for just, that justification is given within the motion. And if you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact Katie, so. So if you guys want to go through that, we can kind of go through that a little bit.
Not you, it's Katie, but Katie.
Yeah. Fake Katie, not, or real Katie, not fake Katie. So, um, we talked about this in the office quite a bit and, um, really like the, the fact that public assembly doesn't have parking requirements assigned to it. With the parking, um, concerns that are, seem to be always within the C3 Business District. It made sense that if you guys are looking to amend this tonight, that you add parking requirements to that. And then if you're looking to add the, a larger portion of it, uh, you, you, you look to follow her recommendations that we went through. And, and the reasoning behind that is, uh, if you're looking to allow a larger area to be, to be accessible or to be utilized, it doesn't mean that they can't pick up additional parking somewhere else. It's within two hundred feet, so that's a, a pretty big area. You could take down, um, a vacant lot or a house and then provide additional parking. You guys also within the, um, the C3 Business District allow for, uh, shared parking, so if it was purchased, um, and you could share parking, that would be another way. Leasing would not be something that we'd recommend that you allow because, um, you can have terminated leases and then the use is not valid at that point. So we'd have to see, um, you know, if anybody did share, they'd have to have, uh, an agreement in place that they've actually purchased a portion or, or those parking areas, so. Those were the requirement, or the recommendations that came down from Katie, if you guys were looking to amend this tonight, so.
Now on the amended articles, uh, 15C3, um, is there a motion required on each or is it one general motion?
You could, uh, if you guys, well, so that's, that's the question, like, if you generally support all of them, uh, you guys could just move to, to a motion to accept them as, as presented. If you guys want to modify them, then we'd have to obviously modify the ones that you want. Or if you guys wanted to table it again and say, hey, we'd like you to, to develop it and call work session, we could do that as well. It's, it's really what you want, um, to see down there. It's opening up the, uh, the general area for a large use is going to be difficult for anybody in that area once you put parking restrictions in there, um, for the simple fact, I think that, uh, his might be one of the only, uh, the applicants might be one of the only areas that would allow, that he actually has that kind of parking, uh, already built in. But it doesn't mean necessarily that you shouldn't allow it. Um, one question I asked Katie was, does the master plan generally support it? And she goes, well, um, it, it generally doesn't, but it does offer, you know, um, mentions of like supporting this type of activity. But, you know, it's really, is there a lot of area down there for it? So, um, you might allow it, but there might not be necessarily right now an area to do it.
That's like the guy that came for the banquet room above the bank.
That, this is the same, same guy.
Well, I'm saying.
Yeah.
There really is no parking and if, if he has something on the weekend with a hundred people, Ram's still has something with.
Well, well, in his.
And I mean, and then they got them two little lots and they take all the down-street parking, what does that do to the movie and the other vendors?
Yeah.
That are down.
So, so, um, public assembly small allows up to one hundred people. That parking lot currently has twenty-five parking spots. So you have to have four.
Parking lots.
You have to have, uh, four people for every parking lot. He could meet the requirements that are already existing and have small assembly already in that, in that building. So.
Isn't that a public parking space that Ram's still another people, or is that strictly his parking lot?
It's, it's the bank's parking.
Oh.
So, um, that's strictly their parking. If other people are utilizing it, then, you know, they're doing it at their own peril. So.
There is, there is a sign.
Yeah.
Park there and it will be, and then you'll be towed because I checked today.
Yeah, at their own peril. So, um, but they currently have twenty-five parking spots in that lot. Small assembly is already allowable. If you guys are looking to allow, um, assembly small or not to be included in parking lot, because currently right now, he could, he could continue as, um, his small assembly and there are no parking requirements in there at all. So the fact that they're existing is just good fortune. But if somebody else came in and they wanted to do the exact same thing that he's doing, um, or, you know, if they want to expand it and we allow for large and we don't put parking requirements in, then, um, they don't have to provide parking. So then they would eat up the, the parking that is on the downtown if people were to come in there. I'm not saying, they could, they could Uber there, I mean, or whatever else or get a ride, but, um, typically our, our zoning ordinance would like to see in those areas, uh, parking. But, um, they're exempt currently, so.
Parking lot around through the bank back there?
It's pretty tight.
I don't know how you could get twenty-five cars in there.
You got that little part that's up on the hills part of it, it goes all the way over to the street.
A lot of people think that's public parking, it's not, so.
Yeah.
I think I looked at the description, it does go all the way over to that street.
Right, it's, it's, um, I think people assume it's city parking.
Yeah, they're assuming it is, yeah.
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 But that is, that's still private property that belongs to the bank there. That bank owns that whole strip along that hill.
Yeah, right.
So.
There you go.
That's where bank employees used to park was up on top of that.
So, so essentially what, what, what Katie's.
Bank people park, not directly behind the bank, correct? That's public.
That's, that's owned by the property, it's owned by the bank. That, that lot that's right straight south of it, that's owned by the bank.
I thought it was.
It's the, the parcel that's to the east is public, owned by the city.
Right, the, the, all the way to the road the south of the, so on the hill behind the, the, the turning area for the ATM is.
Across the street from the advocate parking lot.
Yep.
Yeah, to the east. Yep.
Was there an event or a series of events, something recurring that facilitated some of these change proposals?
No, not, not that I'm aware of. I think that the big thing is the gentleman came in and would like to hold, uh, um, you know, a little bit more, a larger facility there. And, um, Katie at the time when they came in, uh, was not fully aware that the public assembly was allowable. And once we dug in there, um, we found out, hey, he can, he can actually have a hundred people in there with what he has right now. And that's, and the parking was, was not a requirement at that time. We looked at that and we said, hey, you know, if you are going to allow for these large public assemblies, let's say they start hosting weddings or other events. If they're allowable, you know, as a use in that area, um, then you, you know, they have to have parking and that's really what we're trying to button up here. And then the other portion of it is, do you want to allow for large assembly in that area? Which, um, then if somebody wanted to purchase another area and like maybe demo out a house or, um, and provide parking there, then they, they could do so. As long as it's one, two hundred feet of their property.
Feet, so I was just thinking if they were to purchase a, you know, parking space further south of town or something, we have a lot of parking lots with a lot of empty buildings. So they couldn't shuttle people back and forth because it's not between.
It's got to be within two hundred feet by the current zoning ordinance. And that's, that's not to say that they, um, they couldn't have an area that they shuttled, it's just, it wouldn't count towards their use parking. You, you know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I just know that this downtown.
Two hundred feet, scared of the block completely to the south pretty well anyway, two hundred feet from there.
Right, I mean, unfortunately with this building, there's, it's basically surrounded by parking lots that are city parking lots or library parking lots or, and then there's some houses that are, don't, they're not, they're really densely populated together, so I don't know how many, how much of a lot you would get out of those, those areas. But that's not to say it's not, and, and when we look at it, it's not just for this project, it's, it's for the entirety of the C3 district. And so, um, you know, while this, he might already be good to go or it might work for him, um, when you're looking at this use, think about other areas of the C3 as well that may or may not, you know, in the future, you know, you, you want to see something like this or, you know, even on like Washington or, um, some of these areas that, you know, somebody who's like, hey, I really like to do an event center over here, you know, and then they have to come up with parking. So, um, the C3 district is, uh, you know, supposed to be our central downtown area, so, um, and I know parking's a concern, so.
Could be opening a can of worms, too.
The choice is really your guys', so, um, we've just put together some recommendations if you decide to go that route. Some of them are simply adding, uh, adding parking to, um, the public places of assembly, so.
And all because a guy came and asked a question about having a.
How about street parking? How does that, how does that figure in, Mike? Because you have, was it Clay Street right behind the bank?
Clay's like, uh, it's right where by Community Craft is Clay, I believe.
So before it jogs in, it's water?
Yeah, yep. And that's where, and then it jogs over and that's like where Manassas Tire is and then it shoots down by the library and then by the Manassas News Advocate. So there's, Clay's the actual next street over and I don't know if it's within two hundred feet even, so I know there's a parking lot over there. And there is a vaca, a vacant property, I want to say, and then, but, uh.
State law parking within two hundred feet?
I doubt it. I'm going to say almost positively no. So to, to put it in perspective, I think like, you know where they're putting in the, um, the new housing over by the fountain?
Yes.
So like that parcel from the river, so if you can picture where the river's at, I think it's like three hundred feet, so.
Yeah.
Two hundred feet's pretty close. It's basically if you're across the street and maybe down one or a little bit, it gets any in there.
So from the back of the bank building to Water Street is about two hundred feet?
Say probably you're hitting the library parking lot is where you're about with two hundred feet.
Would any more parking lot there?
It's too far away.
Too far away.
So.
Parking lot by Jack Pine is pretty close on the border of it.
Yeah, it'd be right there.
So you're saying the public, uh, parking lot by Jack Pine, behind Jack Pine? Is that what you're talking about, Bob?
The one across the street from Jack Pine there, uh, where, where it used to be next to the old Pomeroy Bottling Works there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so where it meets the old Community Craft building.
Yeah, so right, right near Community Craft and all that in there.
Okay. So that's about, that's a stretch, could be two hundred and one feet.
I mean, hold on.
What are, what are you looking?
You guys get me.
Been messing with it.
Just trying to go through everything, Roger.
Yeah, but if it's only one guy that come and ask you a question, I mean, just let, leave it as is.
Yeah, but it, it'll open up to other people coming too, though.
Well, if, all right, so how many, how long have we been here? We have one person asked, so are we going to wait another ten years for a second person to ask? Or if it comes a problem, then we'll deal with it.
All right, so you see the, the, this is a hundred feet down here, guys.
There you go.
Oh, okay.
So when you're measuring it, it's probably about the width of
Yeah, see.
About this block right here, from here to here is about a hundred feet. Maybe from here to here, so when we're looking at, this is a PNC bank, this is their parking lot right here. And so when you're, when you're trying to get over to here, I think, or it's over here, I'm sorry, is this Clay? Yeah. What you guys are thinking about, that's, it might be, it's going to be close, but at two hundred feet could be right about here.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, and the, but, I mean, again, the C3 district is
Goes on the First Street.
Pretty much all the way down to here and then it goes up to down Washington and then back over this way. So it's a larger area than your, than just the PNC bank building.
But it's also the most, well, one of the most densely populated or built on and not a lot of opportunity. not a lot of opportunity to create parking.
I understand, yep. You guys are, you guys make it really hard to be neutral here, so.
I have a totally different issue with this request, though. Um, and, and my issue is that that building's for sale. So if this guy decides to do this and then sells it.
Let, let me just clarify. He can do public assembly small.
I know.
Currently, um, and there is no parking requirements. So, but the good thing is, he can meet the parking requirements if you guys were to put parking requirements in for places of public assembly. The other amendments are to allow for a large assembly and then to also place, um, and clarify some of the other parking requirements on there, so.
So they could, yeah. So that's why I say, leave it alone.
What, what's the sleigh bell parade considered?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Sleigh bell parade. People park all the way back to like Seventh Street.
The sleigh bell parade is, um, well, I think it's considered a temporary use permit. It is not.
By parade.
Yeah. It's not a, uh.
Even because they're always parked around my house, so I'm curious.
Well, it's like hops and props, they're temporary activities. And so, um, they do not require, um, parking there granted by city council.
Yeah.
So, discussion? Bob?
No, I think we do need to have some parking requirements in there of some type, even though there's none for the small now. We have to have, now, it doesn't say how big it has to be, we just have to provide, have parking. And it's not, it mostly won't be residential, so the one space per unit won't apply, really. And it being, with them being nothing there for a small unit, we should have something anyway for small gatherings.
You got to figure too, if they, if they rent that building out, say they have ninety to hundred people, then you got a band, then you got caterers and bartenders that adds to that, and that's more parking that, you know, that you need to have.
Oh, we're talking, I'm talking on the small, the hundred people, this hundred people in small, that would still include the band and the caterers, that hundred people.
Okay, what are we having for to eat that we catering? Or, or Italian, we can go Italian, we can go Italian.
So, just to give you guys a little bit more clarity, if you wanted to just add the parking requirements to the public assembly, it would be amending Article Five General Provisions, the amend section, the first one. And then if you're looking to add in, um, a large assembly, it would be amending the Article Fifteen C-three Business District, and then as well as amending Article Eighteen Standards and Requirements. If you, uh, don't want to do any of them, then you move to deny. Um, if you'd like to do all of them, you move to motion to do it, and then you can amend with modification if you guys would like to change what these, these are stating, or you can table and tell us to get back to work.
Well, what you did was fine, so we either follow the recommendations or deny them. So, I mean, it's, uh, if this is what you wanted, I happen to be there, missed that meeting, so I don't know how serious you got for parking, but yeah, that's, that's the only thing you're adding, right? Is eligible, eligible, is the parking, that's a problem.
So the first amendment would be to the parking to put it into, uh, except for in the C-three Business District, it would be both large and small would be then, parking requirements would be added to that.
Right.
The other two are specifically geared towards large places of public assembly and allowing them in the C-three Business District. So if you just want to do, um, for parking and allowing, uh, the making sure that public assembly in the C-three Business District, um, has to conform to parking for public assembly, you would pass the first one only. If you would like to see large assembly as well, you'd pass all three. Um, and if you would like to see, you know, just, we don't, we feel it's fine the way it is, you would move to deny. And if you would like us to go back with some direction, then you would table.
Could you, do you have an example of a large assembly?
It's over a hundred people.
Over a hundred people.
Well, I get that, but like, like an actual example of something that's happened?
A wedding.
Okay.
A wedding.
So.
How, how would that affect, like, say, like, the Blue Fish has, has a reception there? They would have to be required to have.
Are they over a hundred people?
No.
Easily, they've been over a hundred before.
Tells you how.
Then they should be going with a.
House with the upstairs and downstairs, they have over a hundred.
So.
I've been there when there's been over a hundred people there.
Yeah.
If, then that's a violation of the zoning ordinance. Um, and.
That may be true, but yeah.
Um, and so.
One time, easy.
You know, they would have to provide that parking for that, so.
And where they use that, that at?
What's that?
Where are they going to be doing that at? Because there's.
That is, that is what you guys.
Parkers it is.
I understand, but.
The Elks, the old Elks parking lot, and then that lot right across, that small lot.
That's got to be behind the turnpike.
You guys, you guys are dealing in, uh, hypotheticals at the moment. Um.
The, the thing is, we change it, though. We're changing it for the whole district.
Exactly. And so.
Right.
Right.
How, how it's going to affect other businesses, especially if there's three or four events going on at the same time.
Around the Fourth of July, absolutely. I mean, so.
Well, the sleigh bell Christmas, isn't it, the pre.
That's a temporary activity use.
Yeah, but I mean, the effect of the, the parties in different places are, are held in different places.
Oh, it definitely affects it. There's no doubt about it. It's, um.
That's what I mean.
But you're, if somebody came in and, and said, hey, I want to do a public assembly large, over two-hundred people, um, it's currently not allowable in the C-three District.
Right.
So, if they were like, hey, I'm a, I want to come in as a small, it is currently allowable with no parking requirement.
Right, right, right.
Now, um, if they, um, you could have several of those that people came in and did as part of, uh, an accessory use even downtown. They have the event space for it, they can pass fire code, they could do it, um, as allow, as long as it was, you know, part of their initial permit, or they use it, utilize it as an accessory use. Um, once they get over that hundred people, that is supposed to be a, a large assembly and it requires a different permit.
Right.
Or a use allowed to it as an accessory use. And currently, again, there would be no parking requirement.
Is there a possibility of something being put in where you can get temporary special use permits for a certain timeframe in something like that?
It's a temporary activity permit. They're usually six months.
But they, they would have to come in.
Before city council. They're usually, they're usually like, they're usually, um, temporary activity permits. So the ones that I've brought through are for like temporary sales of like wakeboards on the beach, um, for a six-month period. Uh, we always give one to, recently, Echo is love for the, to house the homeless population in, um, in the church through the winter. Um, these are the types of things that you typically see, uh, events such as hops and props, um, comes in probably as a temporary activity permit. Um, I don't apply for that, but I'm sure that's how it probably comes in, uh, and I haven't walked that one through council. But, um, those are typically the things that you see, something that's only going to be for.
For short.
A small amount of time, six months at the most, and then you allow for it. When we, uh, looked at during COVID, allowing those, uh, the stages and outdoor seating in public areas, that went through as a temporary use permit for, uh, the brewery on the sidewalks there, and then they asked to make it full-time, and they may amended the, the city regulations to allow for it. So, um, those are the types of things that you would normally see.
Now, are, is parking required for those?
It can be, but, or, or an area, um, but it doesn't have to be. But again, it's outside of zoning. It's, it's handled by the city council as a, as a temporary use.
But the temporary permits, you would have to do it singly, wouldn't you? You wouldn't give it a, a temporary permit for six months for.
Large events? No.
So every, every event you would have to have.
It's, it's a one-off, yeah, essentially. So, um, all these have to apply every year.
Yeah.
So, and then they're walked through by a staff member of some, of some sorts. It's probably, at this point in time, the majority of those probably coming through either myself, well, not me anymore, Katie, but Katie, um, not fake Katie, and Mark, um, or the Chamber or the DDA. Those are pretty much the ones that would be driving that forward.
Any other discussion?
So basically, we got those little, if they go for permits for a short time, like the sleigh bell and all that, just like that, they follow that same thing. They should be okay, just for a set period of time. That's what I'm thinking. Because I can't see something constantly being, going day after day, week after week. Actually, maybe, maybe I'm at a month.
They're, they're allowable for up to six months, but, so.
How, how does the Ramsdale handle when they have a reception there? Is that a permitted use, or is that just?
I'm sorry, what was that?
When the Ramsdale has a reception there, how is that used? I mean, is that a permitted use, or is that allowed at, at Hardy Hall, or?
You're, you're talking their par, their parking requirements?
Yeah.
Um, no, they're pretty much grandfathered in. That building's been there before zoning.
Okay.
Um, and it's held events the entirety of its time, so it's, it's really, you can't go after them and be like, well, now you have to provide parking. They're, they're grandfathered use, so.
Just checking, for another reason, just checking.
All right.
It sounds like we should want to table it maybe and discuss it again when Katie's here, or what?
It's, but you guys, it's up, up to the commission. So we have, uh, is there a motion to approve? A motion to approve with, um, changes on the amendments, on the articles? A motion to deny or a motion to table?
There you go.
I'd like to make a motion to table and have a work session on this.
Okay, so if Bob has a motion to table for work session, second from Marlene, any discussion?
All right.
Building parking in town?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Plans to build parking in town, more of it?
Where would you put it?
There, there's, there's some plans to build some parking in town.
I heard that.
Besides the, the, for the Spirit of the Woods place?
No.
If they have a full weekend, though, that, their parking lot will be full.
Well, they, they need all their parking for their, for their hotel.
They need all that. So is there something besides that?
No.
It's, okay.
No, not at this time. Although I keep, do highly recommend and keep pushing and prodding, um, there's that lot over there on, across from, uh, the North Side Bakery, that vacant lot there.
Yes.
Yeah.
They, the city should buy that lot and, uh, three-quarters it off to, for city parking, sell off the parking on the, on the others, the other sides, and then put like, uh, commercial space down below with apartments above it as like a wraparound to hide the parking, and then start building out the Washington Street. I, I think it's a great idea, but, um, I'm, I'm just a contracted planner.
You got to buy it from Harold, so.
Hey, see that guy that had the money? He'll, he'll.
Yeah, you got to get the money from Roger.
Yeah.
To table with a work session built into this.
Right.
No further discussion. Okay, please take roll.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlock?
Yes.
And I caution, uh, the, um, council that we are gone from October eleventh until the sixteenth, is that right?
I am too.
You're back on Monday.
Yeah.
If you're going, where I think you're.
Yeah, we're going up there, yeah. So Katie and I both, fake Katie and real Katie, so.
Work session.
Mackinac Island.
I'll be in Orlando.
So when you guys look to call your work session on this, um, you know, please keep that in mind.
So you're going from when now?
Uh, the eleventh until that, well, until that following Monday, really.
Till next week, you're gone.
Yep.
Eleventh to the seventeenth.
They'll be gone Tuesday evening to, and returning back Friday.
So.
The week of the seventeenth would be the best, be the next time to have something.
And what, what we could do is we can bring in some maps as well and kind of give you guys an idea a little bit better about what two-hundred feet looks like. I know it's hard to visualize even, even on a map like that, so.
So we have the.
Yeah.
If, if we're going to hold this on a, on a Thursday, we have the twentieth and the twenty-seventh.
Can't do the twenty-seventh.
Because we have, um, county planning commission meeting.
Okay.
So the twentieth.
So the twentieth. If works, if works, Roger?
November?
Oh, October.
October.
Over twentieth?
Yeah.
Bob's going to be gone.
Good work.
If you guys can make it, it's fine to, so.
Well, we'd like to get this taken care of.
Yeah.
The twentieth, we can make work too.
Okay. So send your questions over to us, Bob, or any concerns. Okay. So, uh, schedule for the twentieth, October twentieth?
Would you guys like it at seven o'clock as well, or would you like to do earlier?
If you want to do it.
I can do it.
Anytime, I'm open.
Six PM?
Okay, that works.
All right, six PM on the.
Here?
Right, well, we got to find out.
Is this open on the twentieth?
I don't know. We won't know until tomorrow.
Until tomorrow.
At, at any rate, we, since it is a special meeting, we will notice it, um, with, uh, at the proper place in City Hall, so.
All right.
What?
You, you have to put public notices out so people know where they're, if, if, if the twentieth doesn't work, you guys can tentatively set that there, and if we have changes, we'll, we'll change it on City Hall, and then on, and we'll have, uh, the website changed to reflect that as well.
Oh, okay. But right now, it's October twentieth at six o'clock, right?
Yes, sir.
Here.
For now.
For now.
Okay. All right, uh, move along, public comments, communication. If there's anyone, um, in the audience that has a comment, will you come up, state your name, address? You have three minutes, up to three minutes.
So the name is Mark Miller, uh, Director of Economic Development from Astoria Chamber, four-fourteen Cedar Street, Manastee. Um, I'm going to do something a little unusual with my three minutes. Um, let me start with this. Um, as public servants appointed to this commission, this count, uh, the planning commission, um, you probably don't hear this very much, but I'm going to say thank you. Thank you for your service. Here's why, three reasons. Uh, tonight, on tonight's agenda, and the chair asked me to come tonight to listen in to, to Steve Brower, and I did, and we had all this other thing, all these other things on the agenda. Uh, what you've done tonight and what you've done in the past, um, the, um, the, the issue of the public assembly, you were inclusive, you asked for collaboration with the DDA, with other bodies, and that's the kind of thing that was very much appreciated by the DDA board. Um, they appreciate that, you reaching out and asking what their opinion was. Um, on the canvas for the, uh, for John and the, the, uh, property on Washington Street, um, you have basically thought through, and you'll get to a decision on what to do with that, but, uh, you've thought about how to address our housing crisis. For the Chamber of Commerce and the businesses we work with, we cannot tell you how many times we hear that an employer has offered a job to a qualified applicant that has to move here, move their family, move their children here, and they've had to turn down the job, the applicant has turned down the job because they do not have an adequate place to live.
I've heard.
This, this helps with that. And then the last thing, um, on the parcel split, um, you took a pro-business stance here on that. I don't, there's a lot that can't be said about what's going to happen, what might happen at that site, but you're allowing for potential redevelopment on a waterfront property along our US thirty-one corridor, which definitely needs improvement. So I just want to say thank you. Um, certainly, this is just a extre, needless, um, kind of comment, but, uh, I know people who work for communities, work for community development, work on economic development. We don't hear those words enough, and I just want to say thanks. So I will not take up any more of your time, but, um, uh, I'm sure we'll see each other again very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else has any comments? Please come to the podium.
Tell us how good we are. Go ahead.
None?
Nobody, son.
Staff reports? Katie?
Katie, Katie.
Becky.
Um, what do I want to tell you guys?
There you go. That sounds like Katie.
Yeah. Uh, so we're still moving forward on the rail relocation project. I don't know how much you guys have heard about that. We're currently in the process of getting very close to applying for a grant for the planning process on that. So stay tuned for that as we move forward. We were fortunate enough that they extended out their, their timeline to October 11th for us to apply. And so we're kind of putting the last minute finishing touches on that, so let's hope that, that's successful. And that is in a group effort. I had, I can't say enough good things about Bill Kinnis, the grant writer for the county. He's been working diligently on that. He's a go-getter. And, you know, he, he deserves a little recognition for that, so appreciate that. We also got the EDA grant for the, well, we didn't. Let me again give all credit to Rob Carson out of Networks Northwest and the Smart Trails Group of people who are working really hard up in the northern part of the county, getting the Coomish and Calva routes connected up there with Wexford and Benzey County. Those trail systems are gonna connect and come down to Calva. So the next step would be for the County Recreation Commission to move forward and try to figure out the route from Calva into the city. And so stay tuned for that, so.
Thought they had a bike route, didn't they? They have a bike route.
So I've, I've sent you guys all some brownfield training. It is a, about an hour-long video as well as a PowerPoint. While you guys are not part of the county brownfield, you have a city brownfield. And when they talk about core brownfields, you guys have a little bit more flexibility in that, but it will give you a general idea of what a brownfield does and how it functions, which is important when we talk about, you know, incentivizing properties that might be blighted or otherwise. So when somebody comes in and they're like, hey, it's a brownfield, you guys can completely understand what they're talking about. It's broken down really simple. There's a, a great presenter there, Susan from Fishbeck, and I won't attempt her last name because I'll mess it up. It's, it's not that hard, but I just know I'll mess it up. So it's like, I'm gonna go for it, but it's Warwick, I think, is what it is.
It's not pronounced the way it's.
Yeah, so shot it, you know, whatever. It's, it's, she's in the email if you guys want to see it. She's a great presenter. We're happy to be working with her, and if you guys can take an hour out of your time and just watch the video, that'd be awesome. There, we had pretty good attendance at it, and I think everybody came away feeling that they knew a lot more than the 30,000-foot view that we get when we attend like, you know, the housing summit or the regional summit where, you know, we've listened to the last couple of years from the State Land Bank discussing it and how those tools can work. So our mayor was there, that was great to see. Cindy Lundberg was also there, and that, that was, that was also great to see, so. What else am I missing?
I'm on brownfield, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem. I'm sure there's other things, guys, right now, and I apologize if I missed anything, but do you guys have any questions?
Hey, Mike, could you send me the link to my personal email?
Yep, sure can.
I have issues with the city emails.
Okay. If you guys are having issues with your city emails, that is where I sent it to, so.
That's where I had to be.
I hadn't received.
Send it to me and I'll forward it to theirs, because I have their home emails.
Okay.
It made me download the video, it wouldn't play it right away. I had to download it before it would start to play.
Right. It's a, it's a link, so it will take you to a Google Drive, and you guys will have to download the link.
Takes 10 minutes to download. I can tell you that, because I did, I did, I did it before.
All right.
I don't have.
Yeah. I will provide you the PowerPoint in a print-off. Unfortunately, it's extremely hard to provide it in any other way, if you don't have a computer to access it, but.
Where does we print it on?
I have the PowerPoint, I'll print it off for. And then what we could do is, if you want to listen to it and you, you have an hour and you want to drink some coffee, we could have you in our conference room and set you up too with a laptop, Marlene, if you'd like.
How are you talking?
So. Other than that, I've seen a lot of familiar faces at the regional summit. I think there was some really good topics discussed, including mental health. I think that's kind of oftentimes overlooked, and people aren't aware, you know, what's going on with it, so I thought that was good. And then I think the land bank's about to pick up some steam, so if you guys were there and you've seen Rachel Nelson's presentation, I think it was very well done, so.
Thank you. Nancy? Nothing?
Question for Mike, if I could?
Clearly.
Well, and I don't know, it's been talked since a few months about Kelly, or Kelly, she was gonna look into the training as far as for us, as far as the.
Yeah, so we did look into it, and there, we talked to Mary Riley at Michigan State Extensions about it, and Katie's in the process of trying to get you guys an exemption from the time that we missed.
Yeah.
And then get you guys back certified. So one of the things that we're looking at is, you guys have training dollars that are set aside for you on a year-to-year basis. The online portion of Citizen Planner, if you guys were to retake it, is I want to say $250 apiece.
Yeah.
What do we have, seven members?
Yeah.
I think that would be higher than what your guys are allocated, but it doesn't mean we couldn't ask or request it from the city. We would just have to make that request, so.
Had an issue.
I think the only budget you guys, I think $2,000. It's, it's not enough to cover that training, but it is, I'm doing it just because I've never done it.
Yeah.
And it's, it's informative on some, where I might have, in your case, if I was brand new, I might have missed over some of what they're actually, you know, getting into, but it's a great view of, you know, the, the requirements of, of planning and zoning and why we, we plan and zone the way we do, and as well as citizen-protected land use rights, as well as governmental rights. And it breaks it all down about, you know, when, when you're looking at things like that. So I think it's a, an exceptionally good training. I really like the aspect of being able to do it on your own time and having up to three months to do it, instead of sitting in a classroom for 15 hours over three days.
Yeah.
So, um, so I would highly recommend that we go that route if you guys are looking to do that.
We've, we've taken them for years, Roger, and, and I'd like to keep certifying.
Must be a few out here that are, are master system planners, aren't there?
Mm-hmm.
Mike, Mike, Mark, you are, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Yep. So we're trying to get the exemption right now, that way you guys, for the training that we could apply that you guys take, and then that would meet those requirements, so you wouldn't have to sit through the entirety of the program again. But for those new people that have never taken it, you know, the, the online route is not a bad route to go, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Member discussion, Roger?
Uh, yes, the only thing I was asking about then is the, how was that old hospital working out? You were talking with Miller, wasn't it? Were the Housing Commission?
It was the Housing Commission, the last I heard of it, and I, I don't know what has taken place since then. I know we haven't had those talks with those entities in, in probably, I'm gonna say a month, but it could have been two weeks. Time just tends to blur once we get beyond two weeks, so it might have been two weeks, it might have been a month, but I don't think we've had a conversation with them in probably a month.
Sitting there empty, nobody's gonna do nothing. I'm good, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing?
Kelly?
Nothing.
Yeah.
I've had a couple of people ask me about grow facilities, the ones that have been permitted in town.
Yeah.
Want to know if they're up and running, or.
No, they have not applied for their final certification, so some of those, you guys have extended out, other ones have not hit their two years yet. You know, but we're, they, they're coming up on their final year, so. And I don't know, you know, it's, there was an interesting article about commercial spaces that are available in, in the city today, or yesterday in the paper.
Yeah, it was in today's paper. And the other one is the latest grow facility, the one, what is that, 9th and?
One down in the.
I'd like. Is there anybody we can get in to at least clean up the, what's left of the parking lot? Because it looks really bad. I mean, the weeds are like six feet high.
Uh, that would be a blight enforcement.
Century property.
Down in the old Century Bull property.
Yeah.
Yeah. If the grass is long, that's a, that's a blight enforcement issue.
It would be a blight.
So that would be the city police, that would have to be.
I've talked to Ken on that a couple times. You need to clean it up, so.
What is going on with the storage units? You know, have.